... City Council meeting, and I'd appreciate it if all of you could join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll be following that with the invocation returned tonight by Councilmember Mr. Shannon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, again, we ask for your guidance and help this evening and direct us in the way that you wish us to go. We do give thanks for all members of our community, fire police ambulants, and our families, and give us your direction that we may do those things that are pleasing to you but also helpful to them. We ask this in your son's name, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. In the first order of business this evening, I believe, is our proclamation for the National Public Works Week. Oh, those working guys at Bonner Springs, come on up front.
They are.
You got the short shirt, huh?
Yeah, I know. Who changed that?
I just noticed when I sat down here that was tall. And then I looked over at you and I liked.
The proclamation is whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, whereas the support of important citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work staff who are dedicated to maintaining the city's infrastructure such as our streets, driving, signage, wastewater, wastewater and stormwater system, public buildings, and the city cemetery; and whereas the safety and quality of life of this community greatly depends on these facilities and the staff who work 24/7 to ensure our streets are cleared of snow and ice; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, and sustainability are vitally dependent upon the efforts and the skill of public works officials; and whereas 2017 marks the 57th year of Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association; and whereas the recognition of the qualified and dedicated personnel of our public works department is influenced by the citizens' attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week in the City of Bonner Springs and call upon the community members to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in the operation of public works and to recognize the contributions which public works staff make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Congratulations. And stay safe. One of the most dangerous jobs in a community is, along with first responders, also is our public works department. And so I appreciate all that you do and stay safe. Words?
A little introductions I always like to do. Colin Barker down here, he's one of our gunslingers, one of the new ones, actually three years now.
Those work.
And you know Jimmy Denton, I believe, runs operations and keeps all the equipment running for us. And works with Jimmy on the streets, all kinds of miscellaneous.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. For all you do and also for all of you for us. Thanks, guys. Rolling right along to item number two, which our citizens concern for items not on tonight's agenda. Are there any citizens that would like to stand and address the City Council? Seeing none, I'll roll right along to the consent agenda, which includes minutes of the May 8th, 2017 City Council meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claim, massage establishment and therapist license for spa Rafa, massage and craniosacral therapy LLC, mowing bid award for the city properties, and awarding a bid for police body cameras. Is there anything to be pulled by staff? Citizens? Council need clarification?
No, seven.
You want clarification on seven? You want to pull that?
I just have a question on Jackson Weathermow. We're giving the cemetery over to contractors and the Sextons not? That's my question.
Okay, so let's pull it.
Yes.
Pull number seven.
That's sector rose.
I'm entertaining a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as introduced with the exception of item number seven.
Second. So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Even?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Curley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Brings it back to item number seven, the agenda item, mowing bid awards for city properties. We'll need a motion on the table to discuss. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to award the bid to mow 15 city properties to Supreme Green Land Works LLC.
Moved and seconded. Staff, can we have an explanation or do you want questions first or questions?
Sure, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
There you go.
Well, you know, we're going the same way.
My question is, they're supposed to be mowing the cemetery too, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, this last spring, things didn't end up being very well mowed on, I'm trying to think of the weekend, was Easter weekend. So does this contract go clear around till next spring so we don't have that situation again like we had this year? Do you see where I'm headed?
Yeah, I know where you're headed. I believe this contract is for 2017 only. I mean, we can talk to the contractor and see about extending it through the year. I mean, admittedly, some of the issue we had at Easter was on the rain we had, and so it was very difficult to get out there and cut grass. I think we had a twelve inch.
But we'll also be doing this earlier in the season next year, or that was the intent. We've had this out and had to bring it back.
We were probably running a little late. We could have got it out a little bit earlier. The intent is to get somebody on board, but we've actually got the mowing season set up from March through the end of November, which is the long season. And so the numbers are in the minimal as far as next year's dollars and things are based on that 43.
As long as we get that committed next year before some of these weekends for the cemetery in particular, because that's the one I've been questioned about by people that were up there and they know that my wife is on that committee and that I'm the liaison, you know, I'm trying to.
Sure. Yeah, we were buying.
And that didn't do me much good, though. My head was still being chopped away at, but nonetheless, I'm just, I'm trying to get ahead of that on the.
Well, my question may be for you and everybody else here. We bought that real nice brand of lawnmower for up there and the Sexton usually took care of that. And I think that a local guy would do a better job, you know, we're gonna have contractors go in there, let's hurry up and get it done, you know, and maybe not be careful as they should. I'm just, is this the right way to go, having outside people coming in there? That's something I'm.
We're gonna watch them at first. I mean, I talked to Jeff already. I mean, it's a matter of, we're not gonna let these.
Well, no, Mayor, he's a.
Up there quite a bit.
Yes. And you. So I just wondered if that was the way to go, but I guess we thought that, so.
I mean, the contractor's planning on hiring help so he can do this. The idea from the contractor's standpoint is they can make money mowing grass, so they'll hire help.
Do a good job. That place means something to a lot of people in this city.
The Sexton will act as a quality control individual on this operation, so it's being done because of the need to do it more frequently is, is Councilmember Reasoner, the two. But it's also a quality control because you have one individual in the cemetery.
So does this include a certain number of mows per year or is it, I mean, one mow per week?
From what we told them.
From?
Starting now through November.
Through November 1st?
That's good.
That's fine. And you're foreseeing starting next year, March 1st, weekly mowing?
Yeah, I mean, some of it would probably be weather related a little bit, but when we laid out the mowing season as we refer to, March through the end through Thanksgiving.
And weekly mowings are a good plan, but sometimes in the growing season in our locale, weekly mowings aren't quite enough, and sometimes of the year in between March and November, it's more than enough. So will they be mowing when grass hadn't mowed or growed?
Yeah.
So they'll be mowing when grass hadn't grown?
The weekly mow. I mean, the thing with the contract is once you commit to the contract where they've got equipment and staff.
The advantage to that is it cleans up a lot of the areas that might be getting driven by too fast or the weed eating areas that might need to be weed eaten more, something like that.
And this is weed eating too?
Yes, sir.
Well, they know that this week, I hope that we're coming up on Memorial Day weekend, I hope they're, get out there and make sure it looks really good for the people coming.
We will be cutting it this week. They won't be on.
Until June 1st. Sir.
Well, another one of the questions that was brought up by the committee was the condition of the stones after it's mowed, if they're just covered with wet grass or whatever, who's gonna take care of that because it's kind of a mess? I was wondering about a machine or something, did a rear discharge or somehow to prevent maybe a lot of that.
Most all the commercial machinery now puts it right back down on the ground.
It bulges it so fine.
So that's less of a problem for professionals as it is for our.
Probably happens more when you weed eat. I mean, Jeff's still gonna be up there maintaining some of the issues you brought up.
Not this Jeff.
Yeah, the other Jeff. Well, that's cool. I just, because this is new now. You know.
Well, like Sean mentioned, there's certainly be some quality control aspects, and where you have contractors working, you still gotta have some staff here.
Most places do this.
Yeah, Supreme Green, those are the fellows that moved right out here.
Hundred thirty seconds.
Yeah, they have a lot of people, so they look like a real.
Yeah, we've used them to work, you know, so we're familiar with working with them and the work they've done has been.
Exceptional.
Well, if things aren't quite right, then maybe the Sexton can finish it up or something or do a little bit of cleanup or something.
Still have work to do, Jeff.
Well, our cemetery looks good.
Yeah, it did.
And I went to Old Grove this week, Third and Quinera, where my great grandparents on two sides are, and Mr. McDaniel from our town, and they keep a mow contract, but there were biggest trees down in there on the tombstones that had stormed. So I did call the park director from the UG and they assured me they will get on it. I said, you know, there's still people here, we have people there, and it's not neglected like that one is ours.
A lot of cemeteries have gone to this, having a property maintenance firm do a lot of their regular mowing, and then they have a lot of additional upkeep fences and walkways, paths, those kind of things that are responsible to cemetery people, so I think this is a good start.
That's all I've got to.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? We have a motion on the floor, vote please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Curley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
On to item number nine. Item number nine this evening on our agenda is.
Number eight.
Number nine.
Number nine.
Okay.
KG Properties LLC IRB Public Hearing. We have a note here at our table, and since this is, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing at 7:44 for a continuation of the public hearing from May 8th, 2017, regarding KG Properties IRB.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No discussion, vote please.
Then we want to table it then, don't we? We want to.
Don't we have to vote on that first?
No vote to open?
Oh, yes, you do have to vote, don't you?
Okay, so I'll go ahead.
My apologies.
Certainly, we can do that by acclamation, I would imagine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you unanimously. So the staff, any staff comments concerning the IRB? Public comments concerning the IRB? Seeing none, I would call for a motion to continue the public hearing at 7:46 until the June 12th, 2017, meeting at the regular council meeting. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll have to vote on that too, and we'll do that also by voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you unanimously. Rolling right along to item number 10. Item number 10 is ordinance to authorize the execution of a loan agreement with KDHE. Staff.
I have it, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember, fellow work directors. So this item pertains to a long drawn out process that we've been dealing with to get the loan application to this point for the Morris Water Line. This is a large transmission main from the treatment plant to the Cornell, and Morris will assist the transmission line and bring water down from the storage tank. We'll tie it in right there.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. And it also includes upgrades to the water treatment plant, which is some of the issues why it's taken a little while to get to this stage. We did a preliminary engineering study on that plant. The original plant was from engineering four years ago, that we needed to build a clear well, which is quite a bit of money, and based on review and analysis of what we're doing right now, we do not believe we can do that clear well in order to meet groundwater rule. That is what's in the report that went to KDHE. They saw the report, they basically acknowledged the report based on that engineering study. We still need to make some improvements to the plant, which is what we're planning on doing in order to meet that four log removal, which is 99.99% of virus removal. We'll talk about that, I can answer some questions if you can pass them. But we're also improving the backwash capabilities of that plant and the flooring system is in dire need of a lot of it. We've also got a small plant building expansion included. We got this loan is for $2 million. Based on the new estimates, we could be closer down to around a million. We do not need to take the money from the loan if we don't need it. But the loan paid for is actually for the $2 million, which was the original application that we had filed for. Once the destruction project is done and everybody's been paid, whatever we've pulled on the loan is what the final loan agreement would be for. What we have tonight is this ordinance and authorization for the mayor to sign the loan agreement. At that point, we will, the next step as far as operations, we will go out and get engineering started for the Morris Water Line. Construction could start later this year, but we would follow right behind that engineering and then we'll do engineering for the water after the engineering is done for the Morris Water Line. Any questions? If you may, I'll be glad.
Thank you very much. Anything to add from citizens in the audience this evening? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve an ordinance to authorize execution of a loan agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here. No? Man? Sir? Sir?
This loan is for that, but I just have, you know, we have other projects like, and I haven't heard anything about it for a minute, the Inslee Water Line down the front from Nettleton, that's not involved in none of this. That's a separate thing? Okay. I just haven't heard.
Sorry about the pine, that project?
Where, that whole street from Nettleton to front?
It's coming up. We've got funding for that too, actually. I mean, we gotta go through the process, but we've got approval for the further plan, same loan process. How was the interest? Two, three, three?
Two, three, three.
Two, three, three on this loan.
Sir?
It's not quite free.
Anything else? No?
I was just gonna ask the, I assume the lack of the need for the clear water pool is why the projected cost estimated was so, got $950,000.
Yeah, because the clear well would require all these pumping. Right now, we're using our well pump, water all the way to the storage tank. Most of them are 50 horsepower, the big one off is six right now, seven five, but we're pushing about 125 PSI down there at the plant, which cables in those to move water. But if we put a clear well in, you gotta break that pressure zone and you gotta repump the water again. So not only is it a tank in the ground, it's also pumping that you would need to repump that same water.
So in this case, waiting a little bit longer actually helped us.
You know, it took a while to get through. We had, you know, I won't go into a lot of details, but there was some thought process between engineering and operations as far as needing that clear well, and it took some mathematics and some ringing alarms to.
So we can blame half of it on operations and half of it on engineering, that we have a savings of almost a million dollars?
Hopefully what we've done is saved the city a lot of money.
About a million dollars?
It looks like it.
Very good.
I hope that's right. Keep up the good work.
Any other, any other questions? Seeing none, vote, voice, I'm sorry. Vote please.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Curley?
Yes.
Thank you, congratulations. Good luck. It's gonna be another street tour at Bonner Springs. The next agenda item, number 11, 138th Street Engineering Design Agreement. Staff.
Hi, that's Jim, Mayor, fellow work director. This is, we've covered this in a workshop regarding 138th Street Phase One Improvement Project. What we'd like to begin with is the engineering design. We're recommending a work that design contract to Wilson Company or City Engineer, any amount of $233,460. We'd be glad to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Anything to add from the citizens? Nope, no other comments? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to award an engineering design contract to Wilson and Company Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $233,460 for the 138th Street Phase One Improvement Project.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, we'll start down here.
The, we gave this to Wilson, just, was there any other companies that bid this? Did we just go with Wilson because they're our city?
We didn't go to bed. We actually tried a new engineering based on qualifications, so Wilson's more than capable of doing these projects.
Well, they've done a lot of them for us, and I just wondered if.
Typically, now is a conversation that we had internally as well, is that we'll typically find that for these types of engineering projects or engineering projects, as well as companies, we'll have to get them, they will, they will go through a qualification process with, what we did is we went through KDOT's pre-qualified design engineers list to ensure that Wilson wasn't involved in that. They've been involved in this project since the beginning of these conversations about 3138th Street, and we were fortunate to have our engineer also being the individual or individual that had it. We did the street that connects to it, which is K32, so the institutional knowledge is there. It's a lot of reason that we decided to go with.
So the $233,460 is just carte blanche on their point, this is what we want, and we, you know, there's no.
Since based on itemized, they think it's going to fail based on what they're hourly leveraged on, who's involved, being engineers. Well, they've done a lot of good stuff for us, so I just thought I'd ask if there was anybody else that wanted this, but you've answered my question, thank you.
Sir?
In regards to the school district, are they obligated to help out with this, the cost of this study and it all? Or after this study is approved, if we, if it's on us, are there gonna be any negotiations because a lot of this first phase will be done on their property? Or is there gonna be any negotiations with them to maybe help with some of the costs?
It's certainly possible. I wouldn't wanna say one way or another at this point, we'll ask anybody flooding the property. That is what the mechanism to put in roads or infrastructures through assessment. Typically, when you're dealing with arterial streets like this, because they serve a greater population than just the budding residents, that type of method is the way the case. Again, you will probably approach those types of conversations, definitely get further down on this. The goal would be to seek out financing through other agencies, Mark, Kansas, State Kansas, we have available our general funds as well as some of our enterprise funds that are involved in this, so, yeah, I would want to answer your question one way or another.
I only ask because I'm sure they're right on board with this, they wanna have that eyesore taken care of as well.
And that's their motivation. They also have received some grant money to help with a trail system that would be utilized in part of this too. So they've, we've had talks with the school district on getting all of ours, both ours and theirs, concerns in order to help progress this.
Outstanding.
And their project.
Thank you.
Sir?
Well, their bond issue, if my may, here again, their bond issue just passed, and that was part of it, right close to that street, the new bus barns going away. They were gonna do improvements on that end anyway, right there by 138th, so it'll all jive, I hope.
Oh, it'll drive, but I don't believe that bond issue had anything specific concerning 138.
The bonding was strictly for buildings.
The trail is a different, or that sidewalk is a different issue.
Yeah, even the bus barn wasn't included in the actual bond.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I thought that was some of the work, if that would change entries for, you know.
Seeing nothing else? Seeing nothing else? Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Peterson?
Absolutely.
Curley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
I'm sick and tired of that freaking parking.
Very good. Item 12 now, right? Yeah, item 12, the city manager's report.
Just as a quick reminder, Memorial Day service at Sundary coming up, held at 10:00 AM on Monday, late 29. Also wanted to mention that we bring flags as well due to Miami 210. In addition to Memorial Day week, trash service will be delayed for one day. And then we also have, I've listed in here, just as we're starting to get into the summertime swing, several events are upcoming. I'm gonna try to list as many as I can within the City of Bonner Springs. And also wanted to touch on the Cornell Emerson Shidley Water Line. We are working towards that project, bidding in June. There is going to be scheduled, even events within that area, just explaining the project and make sure you know, forthcoming on October 4th. With that, we'll be right back.
Pretty good.
One question.
Please.
Upcoming events. Buzz Under the Stars. Buzz Under the Stars, what is that?
Buzz Under the Stars is.
The wording. Sounds fun.
Concert.
It's a concert, it's a.
Sponsored by Radio.
Buzz, they typically have, have, have their time, and they're, yeah, what happens up there.
Well, I just, the name sounds fun.
Very good. City council items, start down here, sir.
Nothing additional to add?
Not me. I've said enough tonight.
The only thing I'm thinking about is Bonner Beautiful, make sure as we're planning, so they can have a little bit more in their budget, and probably the same thing for the cemetery committee.
There is a dead tree at Kelly Murphy, that pine tree, that Bonner Beautiful plant, it's kaput.
And I bet they know about it, but now, yeah, no. I'll check on it.
Nothing? Nothing? Nothing. That rolls us right into the mayor's report, and I'd like to start by thanking Councilman Shannon for representing us at the Police Officers Memorial this last week in my absence, and also Councilman Cooper for our representation at the Dare Festival the week before. Have always enjoyed those two events, they're wonderful community events, and I appreciate the leadership and the attention that you gentlemen have given it, as well as all of our council. I had an opportunity last week to visit other parts of the country, and I'll tell you what, we have it pretty nice here. It's wonderful to enjoy other parts of the country, but it's great to be home.
The Midwest is nice.
Yeah, Bonner Springs is nice, so unless there's any specific question, oh, Rise and Shine, the Bonner Springs Edwardsville Education Foundation fundraising project is a, their breakfast they do at the end of the school year is coming up this Friday at 7:00 AM. Are tickets available? If you need any, you're welcome to call the central office or speak with Jerry Abbott, but the speaker is Mr. Hendricks from the Negro League Museum, Baseball League Museum, and he, I've heard him speak before, he's an outstanding speaker, so it's worth more than the price just to hear him and all of his memories and recollections that he has. Was happy to attend the, on Saturday, the dedication for the Armed Forces and First Responders in Bonner Springs that the Arts Alliance has helped to facilitate up at North Park. It was a little cloudy, but went off, and muddy, but it went off without a hitch. Very proud of all the different First Responders and the groups who were there and very well represented. The monument itself is, I've seen a lot of monuments and it, it looks astounding, so I'm, I'm very happy how it turned out. And the placement, the site selection up there, some, it's right on our trail, our path that we have, and until you've seen it where it sits, that makes it all clear to why it is where it is. It's a gorgeous setting, and sitting there on that bench and looking at this monument and across the lake, it's, it's pretty nice in Bonner Springs compared to anywhere and you know, it's, it's wonderful. The Farmer's Market, I'm glad to hear it continues to do so well. Please encourage others that, and get the word out on that, this is the time where it needs that second wave of interest and contacts. Make sure you've told everybody that you know about that, some of them may find that very informative. I was shocked with the first weekend, how well received it was and how many people were involved with it, in spite of Marble Days or because of Marble Days, you can look at it both ways, so it was, it held its own, it held its own with that right block away, but it also, I'm sure, was helped by that a block away. So, thank you very much, continue the hard work there. There was something else, Rise and Shine, Council on Mayors, Council on Mayors, this last month, we met at the new Johnson County Historical and Arts Center, which was the old King Louie Bowling Alley in Ice Rink, it's been completely redone, and the Johnson County Historical Museum is inside there. They also have some meeting, community center space, as well as their theater in a box, and I think that's how they explained it, but it's a theater that they can do, they are not committed to just being in theater in the park. Now they can have their theater in the park out of the rain, I guess. But it's a very nice, well-done remodel of a facility, and they've benefited the whole, their whole communities very well with that. Also, the mayor's, Wyandotte County mayors continue to meet on a regular basis and was happy to host the Unified Government CEO for Wyandotte County and this mayor of Kansas, City of Kansas, Mark Holland, at the dedication ceremony on Saturday. So I always like to introduce him correctly out here because he's not just a mayor, he's also our county CEO, and that's the service they provide to us. Unless there's any other questions for me, I'm back in town and don't have any plans to ever leave again, I don't think.
I was gonna say, I might add on to what you were talking about, the memorial, that they are still doing the fundraising, it is ongoing, so that people can still.
Buy bricks.
Yes.
Buy a brick.
The bricks they had there for display, the bricks are in black, starlight black, I think is what they call it, it's a beautiful granite, and you can memorialize an individual or honor an individual or groups, and it's, it's, I've not seen another memorial as well done, so I can say it's the best I've seen.
Jeff, is there not a upcoming Wyandotte County Healthy Living thing that you and Mayor McTaggart are gonna have?
Yeah, the.
Yeah, I saw something there somewhere. It's going on all over town.
Back over there. Yeah, the Wyandotte County Health Department did a community health assessment, and they'll be starting to reveal the results, and that'll be done at a community meeting that's coming up, I believe, Thursday. Why do I think it's Thursday? I think it's Thursday.
I saw that.
If you need additional information, you're welcome to contact me, I have a flyer.
That's all I.
Yeah, that's all I know. All right, unless there's other questions, we're adjourned.